Well. I think we're all present at this point, aren't we? I believe so. So I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Provided, Elektra, you're ready? You're ready? Okay. I'll call the meeting to order, I think I already said that, but I'd like to note on the agenda that Pat Sitzman's name is spelled incorrectly. If we could get that corrected. That's quite all right. I believe it's S I T Z M A N. And also, her term is through May 2027. Okay. And then I'd also like to recognize we have two guests today. Well, not two guests, we have Carol, who's contracted with us, not, you're just here. Carol's in the audience. And also Lex Sanchez with El Colorado Lodge is joining us today. Audrey will also be joining. At least she told me she would with an update. I'm not sure. Yeah, she had something come up last night, so she's gonna ask me, she asked me to do the update. She might zoom in. We'll see. Do we want to go around the room and introduce ourselves to Lex? Does, would that be okay, since we're hoping to be working with the El Colorado Lodge at some point? Nancy, do you want to start?
Sure. I'm Nancy Fortune. I'm the City Council Liaison to the URA. Welcome.
Thank you.
My name is Pat Sitzman. I'm a member of this board and a volunteer at various other places. It's been nice talking to you.
And Nichols.
John Maynard.
Barbara Winter.
Farley.
Elektra Johnson.
Alan Delwich.
All right. Thank you all. We'll go ahead and open up for public comment. All right. Hearing seeing none. We will close public comment and move on to the approval of minutes for June 2025. Is there a motion to approve the June minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the June minutes.
Thank you. Motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Very nice. Thank you. Motion carries, and we will move on to the financial reports, Ann.
Right. And you have March, April, and May, and they're working on June. So, and actually, nothing changes very much. Our bank balance just sits about eight twenty. And it was that way in June as well. So really not much to report. The May financials do show the redevelopment grant of eighty-one five ninety-six, which is our reimbursement to Holiday Inn Express for their property tax. And that's about all. I will indicate that I have paid this month. I just wrote a check for the Christmas lighting, and I had paid for the mural with Crane and the foundation for the sculpture at Dillon. So you'll see that probably in July.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Ann? Regarding financials?
Ann, did we pay the Ricks Garden?
Yeah, I haven't seen that. I was just thinking that. They were gonna have the city pay it, and then the city was gonna bill us. They haven't billed us yet. I'll remind Becca.
Okay, because he hasn't contacted me, but.
Yeah, well, they got paid, but the city needs to rebill us.
Okay.
Very good. Think I asked for a motion? Did we ask, did I ask for a motion to approve financials?
I'll move approval of the financials for April, May, or March, April, and May.
Very good. We have a motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Alan. Alan Delwich, seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very nice. Thank you. Motion carries, and we'll move on to old business. El Colorado Lodge. Do you want to introduce this one, and then we can bring in Lex?
Absolutely. So I met with El Colorado Lodge a couple of times online, and then also Lex in person. And they closed. He can give you an update on where they are at. But I've, we've been talking about doing a facade grant, and they're obviously working on the facade, because they're working on the stucco portion right now. And so I met with them to do that and encourage them to apply for the whole amount. John Maynard also brought up something that maybe he can address as well regarding the El Colorado Lodge. And so I was hoping we could address both of those things. So maybe John, or who do you think first? Right, if you would like to talk about the project a little bit in some detail with regard to the facade improvement?
Sure. I mean, I know you guys are all acquainted with the building. It's pretty old. And so, and as you had said earlier, you know, you go, you start doing a project and you realize that it's, you know, twice as expensive, it's gonna take twice as long. And the main problem with the stucco on that facade that faces the street is that there are cracks along the top, that top rim of the roof, and water seeps in there, it starts to bloat. And that's what's happening, literally with all of the, the units. And so we're trying to, you know, work on that, but it, the cost is pretty, pretty big. It's pretty astronomical. And so we could use all the help that we can get. We really want to turn that thing, turn back the clock of time. And, and really make it kind of like a jewel there. I mean, it's right at the beginning of the city. It's the first thing that you see, and our goal is just to make it look, look and feel really nice again. I don't know if any of you guys have kind of driven through there, but it's, it's a little rough. And so we're, we're trying to get as much help as we can. We do have a few partners on the job, a lot of really experienced guys. Mike Lopez, he just won an award here in town for redoing the Shoshone property. It's four bungalows up on Shoshone and did a really, really good job. But, but yeah, we're gonna need, need quite a bit of help for this one, so.
Yes. So what they were asking for was pretty much the full amount and, and to, you know, be reimbursed. How it works, like fifty percent, so twenty-five from us and then twenty-five from them. And then the other thing we were looking at is some point along the line, murals along those backsides. Either working with Crane or otherwise, trying to get something there so that that facade wasn't so blank facing the street, because that is the pedestrian way. And, and it's just totally blank, and it could be so beautiful, too, with a little bit of shade and a little bit of murals and those types of things. But the first thing to do, of course, is to stabilize the buildings and, and fix them, so. Yeah, so they had sent our grant application in, and I do apologize, because a lot of the things that have happened, happened after my deadline to submit the agenda. So then I just try to submit them as new business so that I can cover everything. I don't know if that's the best way to do it, but I want to make sure that everybody knows what's going on, so. Anyway, and John, if you wanted to mention, or do we want to talk about the grant, the grant application first? Let's just talk about the facade.
Yeah, let's start with that, and then John can follow up.
Okay.
So I'd like to open it up to the board for discussion of the application.
So I have one question. Is, is the grant application active now? So we can act on it today?
Yes, they, they sent it in. I've got all the details. The only thing they don't have necessarily is invoices, because the work has not been done, but, and they're working with a contractor, too. So, but they do have, yes, the application is totally complete and ready to be discussed.
Our process has been that after the work has been paid for, then the applicant can submit to us for reimbursement. And I think that's how it's worked in the past. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
So we're not in a position to expend funds at this point in time until they submit the invoice information.
Right, and that's always how it works. I mean, we always approve the, the grant first, and then the work occurs subsequently, so.
I just wanted to clear that up for everybody, including the applicant.
Should everybody have time to review the application? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Is your mic dying, Alan? Uh-oh. Okay, I thought you had something to say. So again, we can open it up to discussion. Barb?
I just wanted to clarify, when did your group's ownership commence? Is it completely in your overview now? Okay, so it just closed this past month? Thank you.
Pat?
And I had asked before, on the timeline of the completion, I'm assuming that this is throwing a little bit of a monkey wrench into it. So it extends, it will extend my several months. Is that my guess?
You know, I think we're hoping for the soonest, obviously. We have a couple of teams working on the property, and they're working on different portions. And so it's kind of hard to give like an exact, an exact time of completion. But we're hoping that at least the structural issues with those front units will be done thirty days from now, just to give you a ballpark. And, yeah, and we're already, we're already doing it. I have an invoice. I just forwarded it to Elektra. And it's a more complete invoice with, with all the other structural repairs. And just so it doesn't continue to happen. It'll happen every year, and those, those walls will continue to blow and to flood until we fix that. So, but yeah, I'd say at least those structural repairs will be done within the month.
And the grant application, too, is for stucco and paint, so I'm assuming when you get up to fifty grand, you submit that, and we give you twenty-five is how it works. So it doesn't, the whole project does not have to be complete. It's that portion of stucco and paint. So, once you get that piece done, is that correct, Ann? Okay.
Okay, so it's not just, it's not just the, the invoices for, and the scope of work, we have to actually finish it, and then, and then.
No, that's the reverse of what I just said. So what I said is the stucco and the repairs that you're working on, as well as the paint. That whatever you get to at fifty grand, just submit that to us, and then we will reimburse you the twenty-five.
Yeah, and, and I just forwarded those two, too.
Okay.
So I would move approval.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, John Maynard. Seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion, I should have said? And now any opposed? Excellent. Motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're excited for your project.
Oh, we're so excited. Thank you, guys.
That'd be great. All right, fantastic.
Oh, the last piece that would be nice is if Carol could sort of highlight the El Colorado Lodge on our social media and do some, some media on them would be fantastic. Just to show that they're starting on it and all of that kind of thing would be fantastic. So Carol, if you could get his, Lex's, I can give you his contact, too, and talk to the whole team, and that would be really wonderful to just. Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. I don't have a problem with it. I don't know, but I'm seeing a little, you guys want to talk about that for a second?
Twenty-five is the maximum we can give, so I don't think there's much to discuss.
No, I like the whole tax dollars at work, because Manitou taxpayers want to know where their money's going, and this one is a very obvious in-progress project, so.
And a historic property. Yeah, it would just be good to highlight it, too, is really the jewel property that it is from all the hotels. It's a really special one. And some of Danielle's images and stuff would be great, just to highlight that this, this team of investors is investing together and putting in the work and, and transforming it. Great.
And it's my understanding that green buildings will be returned to the previous color, which I think should also be mentioned.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Everything's gonna be uniform in color, and it's gonna be nice, guys. It's gonna be nice.
So they're going to be green?
No, no, sorry.
No, the ones that are green.
The furthest west unit.
Okay.
Yeah, the first, furthest west units are kind of very noticeable, and we're gonna change that, so. Exactly. It's gonna be like a tan, yeah.
It'll be a little bit whiter, too, I think, but it's gonna be a really beautiful color, like it goes historically with what it is. We saw the color boards last time that Danielle presented, so if you recall, it looks, it's gonna be beautiful, so, yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Let's move on to.
Do we want to talk about John Maynard?
Yeah, John, well, I think, were you gonna bring it up in new business?
I was gonna bring it up in other business.
Other business, yeah. So moving on to streetscape. Do you want to talk about that a little bit? I'm not, I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, I guess, they're absolutely stunning. They're beautiful. I mean, that's really all I have to say. Barb has really spearheaded that, so if you want to talk about it, Barb, that would be fantastic, because they're stunning.
Well, thank you for the feedback, and I think we're fortunate to have the water gods over, over all of us this year. Because in your notes, we talked about reaching out to the city for watering and maintenance. I don't think they're participating. We've all been manually watering all the planters ourselves and bringing water down.
Yeah, I guess there was an update on that with the meeting that we had. Farley, you were in that meeting, and they said that we could use one of the spigots. That's all that they said that they would do. Remember? Yeah, that was the update on that.
That's the hotel's water.
Oh, well, a lot of good it does. There we go.
There's no other spigot.
I think the one that they were volunteering was the one at the pool, which makes it, you may as well bring it from home.
Yeah, we're not gonna haul water from the swimming pool.
Yeah, exactly.
Sorry.
Well, you guys have done an amazing job.
We're, it's a labor of love, I guess, but we've been fortunate with the rain. Let me just put it that way. So it's, it's lightened our burden a little bit. And in your notes, Elektra, you guys did approve a thousand dollar grant, but we actually spent less than that. So I tried to be a hard negotiator, and we got a nice discount from Ricks. And so if you ever go into Ricks, thank them for supporting our Manitou Avenue planters, because the owner actually worked with us on that and gave us a nice discount.
And that might be something Carol could also highlight, too, is Ricks providing the plants as well.
Because they're under, I guess, new ownership there in the last period of time. It was a new person at Ricks as well. So use them as well, Lex, for any plantings.
Absolutely.
They're a good partner to us here in the community, so they're over on Yewinto Avenue and very reputable. And as I say, they're, they work with us and the city. I think the city gets plantings from them occasionally. So, anyway, thank you for the feedback, and we're very pleased that everything's thriving. Knock on wood. So we've had a good year. Some years aren't, are more challenging, but.
It's been a good one.
And we are reporting through our past app for the pollinator information. So I don't know what dark hole that goes into of who's accumulating the data, but it's out there. Everybody's reporting on their planters, and so there's six of us supporting the twelve planters.
That's huge. Thank you. Okay. Elektra, do you want to speak on the banners? I wasn't in on that conversation, but somehow.
Yeah, we don't have, I mean, we're basically going to be moving them down in September, and I think that goes along with the invoice we just got for the lighting for Christmas. Is that, I thought we could sort of dovetail those together. We just, two separate? Okay, we'll do that new business, too. Okay. Yeah, so in September, we're gonna have them, that, that's when they slow down, they're able to move them down and replace the new ones and whatnot, so we'll, we'll have an update.
But we don't have new banners. We're just using the same banner.
Same banners moving down, and then there's one missing. Yeah, yeah. It's not much of any kind of update, just making sure that they're all in place.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or comments on streetscape before we move on? Very good. Let's talk about Dillon. Mobility Hub opening. So the city, the contractor on the Dillon project agreed to pour the pedestal for our fifth sculpture in the spirit of Manitou. And they have billed, billed us, so that, as Ann said, that's been paid for. The call is out, the call for art for that sculpture, it closes, I want to say, Audrey said Friday. And she said that the install, I don't think it goes to jury until November, October, and, and then it'll be chosen in December. So it's kind of a long timeline, but we will be getting that, that installed for 2026. And then, do you have, yeah, go ahead.
You know, we had discussion, and you guys can, is it the Spirit of Manitou? The, the sculpture that's by the Holiday Inn Express?
The juniper?
The discussion we've had in the past is how that's obscured.
The juniper, right.
Any thought about maybe relocating that sculpture to this site to be more visible? And then even though we have a call out, maybe we get a second sculpture that might work with that site by the Holiday Inn Express.
Yeah, I think there's been lots of discussion about that. We tried to see if we could get the tree relocated. That was not possible. And discussion also about the Jody Bliss piece being possibly moved. But I think basically Crane doesn't have the money to do that kind of, they can't move, it's, it's expensive to move sculptures. And so we would need, the URA would need to decide to do that, or some other partner, the Holiday Inn. And I believe that the Holiday Inn was in on choosing that piece, so we would need to include them if there were any discussion of moving it. But I do know that last year, there was talk about waiting for that tree for maybe another year, that it would get tall enough that they could limit up underneath so that you could see the sculpture better. It's not a great solution, but it's.
I just think it's.
Yeah, it's beautiful, and it's lost.
It's a visual waste. So I don't know if that, is that an idea that could be forwarded for some review?
I mean, you can see it fine in the winter. It's just fine. I don't think it's, again, it's expensive. I don't think it's worth a lot of effort, right?
So when you all say expensive, what's expensive? I mean, give me a sense of expensive.
Well, it's Crane. I mean.
You have to get a crane. We would have to get a crane. We'd have to close off the street. It's probably gonna be around twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, it's between three and four thousand has been the past. But I think you have a great idea, Barb. Also, through the call for artists, we may find some other sculptures that we want to put someplace. So let's kind of hold on to what the plan is now until we see what comes up. These artists, they want to have their stuff on the streets. They really do. So then we can make some decisions in the future. That's a compromise for, but good idea.
Yeah, but we have one sculpture left. That's all we have money for. Somebody else might fund it, but it won't be us.
So I, I have a, back to the Dillon, I have a comment and question, I guess. I'm, this is my concern. When you don't have a final plan, we could put the, the foundation for the sculpture in the wrong place and have to move it later. And this has been one of my criticisms of the Dillon project from the very beginning. There's not a final plan yet. And without a final plan, there's gonna be throwaway somewhere, and we don't know where it is, and so that costs more money. Are we sure that the location is correct?
It's there. I mean, the foundation's forward. It's done. There, there's no moving it at this point. It's over.
So when we met with them to determine the location, that Ben Schmidt was there, and I can't remember the contractor that was working. One of the contractors, and they, and then Aaron from the city was there, and somebody else that I didn't know. Anyway, they, we all walked that area with them, and this was the spot that they determined to be the best location where there would be no movement, that it wouldn't change. I, but you are correct in that they did say that there was one possibility that could be out there where they would have to move it. And we just said, well, we won't be paying for that move.
I mean, what I could see is that they changed the circulation, and the curb cut goes right where the pedestal is, and then you have to move it.
There's a bus stop.
Or something like that, or, or the final landscape plan puts the required street trees in front of it. I mean, those are things that need to be, I mean, the final plan needs to be created and adopted. Now, look at you, Nancy. I know it's not your, not your issue, but there's been, there's been no movement on this for some time.
Yeah, I mean, it's not our issue. It's the city's, and I know you've made that comment numerous times. Other than that, there's nothing this board can do. Yeah.
B I T C H. Yeah, just, you know, for the record, you know, we, we didn't have a plan for the Paragon property when we gave them two point one five million. We trusted that there would be something, so sometimes plans change, and, you know, I, I think, you know, we'll just have to hope that it isn't impacted. But it's, it's a dynamic. isn't impacted. But it's, it's a dynamic area.
Um, I'll move on with the, I'm just gonna squeeze the crane because there's other, some other crane things happening in the URA that, just to update you all. Um, so as I said, the fifth sculpture should be in place next year. And also the art signs that were vandalized, those um, are still being printed because the printer at D11, their printer went down and then the guy who does the work went on vacation. And I think what's happened is we are in a big, long list um, of people waiting for their work to be printed. Um, because they do all the, now school's kicking in. So I know that they're, we're gonna get the signs printed. It's just taking a lot longer than we had hoped because of this um, issue with their printer. And um, so those will be reinstalled. And then also the mural was completed at 26 Manitou Avenue. Um, it's really, really beautiful. I hope you all take the, take a moment to go walk back there and, and take a look at it. It's really stunning. Um, and we will be doing, Audrey is going to take that really dark purple background color that's in the mural and she's gonna paint out the bottom underneath of the building so that the building literally kind of goes away. So um, I think the end result will be really stunning. Robin was great to work with. She was very, very grateful and um, a real badass up there on that boom thing. She was swinging through trees. It was crazy. Sorry, on the record, she was amazing on that boom thing.
Stricken.
Noted. Um, and, and that, that mural is part of the Creek Walk mural program that Crane is um, implementing throughout town. So just for your information, the second mural is also about to be completed behind the pool. And that's not in the URA. That was funded with match dollars. But um, it's really exciting that both of those murals will be completed in the next week. So that's all I have for Crane unless anybody has questions. Okay, very good. Um, and we will move on to executive director report.
Alrighty. I've got a whole bunch of things. Alright, so we talked about El Colorado, um, the LaFawn, I'm going to, or LaFawn, I have a report. Uh, Pat and Ellen asked me for a monthly update and I think that's a great idea. So, but I wasn't able to schedule it until after. I'd already sent out the agenda and packet. So um, let's see, am I going, I think I'm going to give you that update and, or do I have that new business? Look at my agenda. Okay, um, I could do it now. What do you think Farley? Okay, so um, yes, so we re, let's see, within the executive director report, sorry, I've got like four slides open here. So LaFawn, we, uh, following the board direction, we uh, got David sent us the draft. I was gone, so I was trying to do it remotely, but uh, we got everything signed and done on the new terms, which we just basically changed the one term that everybody had agreed on in the last piece. And then an update on Paragon, which I also sent out. They are trying to do a whole bunch of different things. They are trying to get movement across the board. Um, so their commercial development uh, is most likely, unless it's a mixed use piece, not going to happen there because all of the retailers they've talked to, like natural grocers and whatnot, are moving into places like old Walgreens that are closing down and the cost is substantially lower than doing a new build for commercial real estate. So the commercial piece is not necessarily penciling. I'm, I was still looking and reaching out to local producers to contact them and connect. But again, it's hard to meet existing retail space that's existing that you're just tenant finishing and building out versus new build with site in everything. So I'm still trying to help them along that line. So we're basically going on multiple lines at the same time, trying to get any kind of movement because everybody wants to see something there. So um, the multifamily residential right now, uh, the way that we talked about it were two parallel paths. One, they're looking at market rate housing. Um, they had the 68 unit plan that was denied because of the um, density. And they're still talking to Kepheart. I did give them a contact with Echo Architecture, who's a local architect. Um, and just, you know, I, I, just trying to like help them in any possible way. Um, and so they're trying, they're, they're looking along that line as well. They're also looking on a second Lytec application through Chaffa. And um, one of the things that I've heard from the housing board, from Chaffa, from them, from their developer people is that frequently the first application is denied. And then as you work through the plan, it can be, um, it can be approved. And then Alan, Alan Dilwich brought up um, the uh, the, the amendment that's like super, super hidden in the code to find that they could actually do 53 units instead of the 43 that's in the code. And so we had to track that down because it was, it was, it was really hidden in the code. I can't remember exactly where it was in the code, but we did find it. Um, but that was um, past the deadline where we could have done anything with that anyway. So they're still trying to do that. Um, they are also looking at, I set up a meeting or I set up a contact. I haven't set up the meeting, but I've had them contact a company called Fading West, which does, um, they've done a whole number of projects across Colorado and they do basically prefab units that are like a specific size and the entire interior is built out. And they've done a whole bunch of developments in Buena Vista and in, like if you look on their website, I'll, I'll put that in the notes so you can look at the, the website. Um, but they've done a whole bunch of things and that would be more like row house development on the site. Um, and then the other one that we're exploring is still a mixed use with commercial on the lower level apartments on the top and then a row house, townhouse or multifamily situation. So they're still looking at all of those things. Um, and we are going to have monthly meetings set up just to basically make sure that we can, we're pushing things forward. They're waiting for a decision. Um, the people that they've partnered with TWG and Commonwealth are two groups that they worked with to do the application because it's not their area of expertise doing these like affordable housing, um, funding stack, stack applications. And to do all the tax credits and all the pieces that make the housing project more uh, attain, more affordable. And that's also coupled with the cost of construction. The cost of construction keeps rising and is not necessarily lowered, even though the housing stock right now. We're in a weird market where now it's a buyer's market and not a seller's market. And so some things have shifted around for them within their pro forma. And the thing that has not shifted that continues to increase is the cost of building products and the cost of construction continues to increase. So um, trying to get a, a unit that is affordable within the AMI that we're aiming for within Manitou is, is difficult to pencil, which means they're not losing money on it. So um, so that's where we are with that. Um, yeah.
Have you had any contact with Shelley Jensen with We Fortify? That did the tiny home project downtown?
No, that's funny that you mentioned that because somebody told me just about that. Yeah.
Teacher housing for Harrison School District. I mean, they're, they're nice projects, but the same concept, I think, as your fading west discussion. And I, and.
Are those tiny homes on axles on?
Right, but they're put in place. I mean, they're.
I don't think that's allowed under the code in Manitou as tiny homes.
Well, you could discuss that. I don't know what they did at the Harrison District because that was permanent housing for teachers.
Absolutely.
And uh, I mean, we could perhaps collaborate on a similar kind of service project to support employees in Manitou, I think, in terms of nice housing. But I think I would just have them look at the site.
Absolutely. So yeah, I, I will reach out to Shelley. It's funny that you mentioned that because somebody who's on that board just brought it up to me yesterday.
But she's evolving and they're gonna do more projects in the region. And she has a builder that she part, you know, a solid builder that, that they're going forward with. And again, they've just finished their second community. Or they're working on their second community for the Harrison School District and, and they're lovely units.
That's fantastic. I will certainly.
Seen some of that?
No, I, I will take a look though, because I, I think that's always been an area of interest in the community to.
Well, I think planning would support something like that, would they not?
Yeah, I think they're.
Supporting our employees in the region.
I think there'd have to be an amendment to the code, but it's the kind of thing we've talked about, like, you know, we have our rigid zone districts. We've talked about maybe doing something some kind of a hybrid where, you know, it's has less dimensional standards and more, you know, functional for the project. Now they're, they're called, you know, PUDs, planned unit developments. And it used to be in our code and we took it out because we never used it. And we bounced around for the last couple of years doing something like that. But there just hasn't been anything pushing the ball, but that's always a possibility.
I would have a conversation in that regard. And then I noticed when you drive out to the airport on Fountain, like it's toward the old site before you make the turn, there's a, a little village that's been created off to the right hand side of those kinds of units. But I think they're considered permanent buildings. They might get rolled in there initially, but they're taken off their.
The We Fortify ones that are downtown are tiny homes that are, and so those, when they're, they're, they're two different categorizations, but we, I'll talk to zoning about that and I'll have an answer for you. But I'll also bring it up to them as well too.
I'd have Shelley come over here and take a look. But she's got some wherewithal.
Yeah.
Behind her.
Yeah.
So, and I mean, it's, it's not a mobile home park. It doesn't look like that at all. And uh, and it helps people, you know, those are directed toward young adults and they're screened and interviewed and they get a reduced rental for two years and then they have to move on. But the interesting concept with that, that plan is and those little units are fully furnished, household equipment, bedding. But when they move, they take everything with them. In other words, that's their step up into their own apartment or wherever they're moving to. And then they're refurnished newly.
It's like 12 grand to refurnish it, I believe. That's what the board member told me last night. Yeah.
So it's a lovely concept.
Where are they located? The Harrison one?
Do you know, um, somewhere behind the school area? Cause it's, it was, I think on their property. And then the one downtown is a, is south of the soccer stadium, just down that street. And there's a bar or something back in that zone, rail, rail yard or something. But it's, it's across the street from there and they've got 15 units in there and a, and a common room facility as well.
So I'd like to, if we could get back to the report and maybe talk about this offline or.
Yeah, we, I'll, I'll, I'll add those, that into our conversation with, with Paragon and, and absolutely. Uh, we also talked about of, you know, that kind of housing with the mayor, I, I did when we toured the Dylan site too. So yeah, so the other piece that I looked at too was the comparison. There seems like there's this adversity between LaFawn and Dylan. And I wanted to address that because I think that the initial goal with the URA was to remove blighted buildings. And I wanted to sort of dissolve that because there's been investment from the city or the URA or, or taxpayers in both of those projects. And um, from the URA standpoint, removing the blighted buildings has been a success according to the bylaws and the rules and the goals of what the URA does. So um, there's been investment in both of those. And I think that initial base investment needs to be perceived from the city and from the URA as a success. And as it starts to transition into the ne, next stages of what Manitou Springs is, it's important to not pitch those against each other, but to see them that they're very much a similar project in both states. There's been a tremendous investment in both of them. And so um, I'd like to um, try to dissolve some of that animosity against each one because ultimately what has happened is that there are no longer blighted hotels in both locations. And that is a catalyst and context modifier that starts to shift things. Now the shifting takes time, money, markets, all of those things to do. But I wanted to um, to just uh, say that and have that on the record for the meeting notes. So the other pieces for my executive director report are um, uh, the Dylan property, we talked about that and Park Row. So um, I will bring this up in new, in the new business because I literally got another grant application from her uh, last night. Um, and so I'll bring that up in new business, but um, we can talk about that. Uh, the banners, public art. And then I did sit on a board for the People Centered Colorado Springs for the Urban Renewal Authority, um, representing them at the Buffalo Lodge. And I've tried to connect Lex, your group with the Buffalo Lodge regarding their pool and the rentals. And especially now that the city pool is closed for renovations and it's only an indoor pool, some kind of thing there. Um, and then also I sat in on the Pac-Man meeting, uh, which is a group that's working on mobility within Manitou Springs, which was also at the Buffalo Lodge. So um, so that's one of the things that I'm trying to work on is uh, further pedestrian and uh, bicycle connections through the URA and trailheads and all those types of things. Um, and so going forward, I just wanted to bring up my sort of focuses for the next few months as the executive director, what I'm focusing on is the success of El Colorado and helping them in any way. Um, trying to get something happening at LaFawn to make sure that that project is moving ahead. And then the other two pieces are working with Crane, trying to get the public art pieces, whether it's murals on the back of the um, El Colorado or in addition to this sculpture that you have approved. And then the other piece that Audrey and I have talked about is starting the process of working with CDOT to paint underneath the highway um, as a mural, uh, that has been something that we've just talked, discussed as a gateway into the URA as well. So those are two, three of the pieces. And then the, the fourth piece is really focusing on pedestrian connections and um, bike connections throughout the URA and making those really safe and beautiful and enhancing those in any way. So those are my four major focuses. So that is my executive director report.
Any questions? Okay. All right, very good. We'll move on to new business.
So the new business that we've got here, I've got four things of new business that have just popped up since this week. Um, one is um, Park, uh, I guess we can start with the renewal of the holiday lighting contract. Do you want to talk about that? Is, is that necessary to, we just?
It's budgeted, so.
Okay, that's easy. Okay, so we got just additional lighting and, and whatnot. And I'm gonna meet with him to see what he's got, whatnot. So that just literally was an email that just came in yesterday. Um, the other thing that came in yesterday was Park Row sent me a grant application for their, um, and it, it came in at like, I don't know, late yesterday. Um, so I'm not sure that I forwarded on to everybody. So what she's asking for, and I'm just reading from my email and I will send this out as well. She, um, there was a discussion, I had to go back through the notes because it was before my time in November of 2024 about a grant to update the facade for the building that was burnt, the cottage that was burnt um, at Park Row. Uh, and um, they worked with a contractor. She submitted a bid or she submitted invoices for $22,788.44. And so her grant request is half of that, $11,394.22. And um, it was for basically, um, it doesn't look like a burnt building now. And they've updated it and apparently are renting it as well. I don't know the full update. I haven't seen it. I've just, I just saw that they had updated it. So. So. Um, that is new business. Uh, that is some new business, and then we'll move on to the next. Is there any discussion on that one?
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. Um, the it's no longer a blighted building. Um, it is now reconstructed to original. Um, and as I can tell, um, somebody's either visiting a lot or living there. But there's cars, there's two cars that are there, too. So. It's good.
The two cars could be the workmen who I spoke with while they were doing the work. Um, they were gonna do the exterior first and then work on the interior, and I assume they're working on the interior. Yeah. They're they're friendly if you go by and talk to them.
So what is this? So this the grant was the grant was submitted from them in November.
In November.
Yeah, so we need to approve. What what's the process for approving? Have they submitted invoices?
They just submitted them last night.
Number before Anne.
And what I sent you.
Yes.
Is a different number.
Yeah, they sent, yeah.
And that's what Debbie had approved.
They had approved, so Debbie had, let me look back and find that. That was quite a bit less.
Fifty-some hundred dollars.
Yeah, it was like five, let me see where that is, because that's in emails, too. Yeah, it's somewhere like five thousand dollars is what was Debbie had.
Who's Debbie?
Who's Debbie? Debbie Sagan.
Debbie. She had approved it, but it we never acted on it.
Well, they didn't do anything.
Right.
For months.
Right.
I mean, longer than months. Well, my guess, it's just months. Go ahead, Alan.
Did um, we, I, it's been so long, I can't remember. They had some insurance coverage or, you know, why isn't this being covered by insurance if it was like a fire type thing? And, you know, it seems like that would have been the first logical way to.
I remember talking about that. There was a there was a reason. I don't remember.
Yeah.
Oh, is that what it was?
Yeah, it seems like for due diligence, we'd want to know, you know, are they, you know, getting double payment? Is it all covered with the insurance? Because it seems like it's a fire damage type situation. Unless they did some upgrades, it should have been there, I mean.
I I feel like there was there was something about the insurance company not agreeing to rebuild it or some. Can you just get clarification from them, Elektra?
Absolutely. So, yes, so the the um, Anne, what you sent me yesterday, and I will, I'll I'll make an update on this and get clarification, send an email out. Hold on, it's taking a minute for me to read. I believe it was like five thousand.
It was itemized.
Yes.
What would be eligible for reimbursement.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it was, but again, it never happened. So that was approved, but that's certainly lapsed. So you have a gr- a grand, a brand-new application?
She sent it last night.
Okay.
She sent a grant application last night for the for the twenty-two thousand full amount and then eleven thousand half amount.
Okay.
But that is a good clarification about insurance. I'll clarify, um, Alan, Alan Delwich's um, uh, concern about insurance, that's a very valid one, and then also the original grant application for the next uh, meeting.
Right. And as Jim had done on that one, you need to make sure that what we're paying for meets the criteria of the.
Yeah, how do we determine if it's eligible?
It's gotta be exterior. I mean, it can't be interior finish. You need to go through.
The invoice.
We should have financials that show all of the work that's being done, including the interior works and and the breakout of the facade. And then whether or not the insurance covered only the interior or the interior of the facade or whatever. So it's more complicated than yeah, than just a letter.
Oh, I appreciate that very much. And it literally came in like seven, eight o'clock last night, something like that. So I just wanted to bring it out. So we had a discussion. And also, um, moving away from Park Row to um, not having that as a focus for a while. It, you know, I think she's sort of decided she wants quite, you know, what she wants to get out of it, and that doesn't necessarily, we have other projects that I think will really benefit the U R A, so putting the energy into those, I think, is more important, is what I'm saying. So, okay, um. All right, are we done with that discussion on Park Row? I'll bring back some of those items. Okay, I gave you, yeah, yes, absolutely.
That brings the uh, application. Do our do our applications expire for reimbursements?
Yeah, it was never acted on, so.
It's for the year, so you have to do it within that.
Yeah, I have to look. I don't recall that, but probably.
I'm just thinking, we ought to know. Yeah.
Yeah.
This would be a new application.
Yeah, I mean, but it just brings up the old question of is there an ex- has there been an expiration? Or is there currently so that we can manage that?
Yeah, again, it's not been a year. It was November, so.
Well, that's not how I recall it. I recall that you, the reimbursement is within the year because you can come back and reapply in the next calendar year. So the note, it's not that the work has, but the the application has to be approved and agreed upon in that year so that you could go come back the following year and apply for a different facade. So it doesn't roll with the month that you applied. It just is within that calendar year.
So then that that if that's the logic, then it twenty twenty-four, it would have December. By the end, it would have been. So this is a new application.
Yeah, she has to provide a new application with the new request.
Okay.
And be, and I think the one from November is mute. It means nothing right now, right?
Right.
It was never acted on in a timely manner, so, yeah.
Right.
I think we could assume it's gone.
Okay, so we're going to, the assumption is that we are going fresh. This is a new application, but we need clarification on the full amount that's spent on the building specifically and what is on the facade. Yeah. And the insurance question, that's correct, yeah.
And I think that we need to make notes of this to clarify in our application.
Yes, I will clarify the application.
Exercise again.
And and that I I will make sure that note is included, so I'll make that actually include that in the application. So for El Colorado, if they apply now, they can also apply in January for a different piece, but the work specifically needs to be done before then to get the money and then they can apply again. That makes sense. That makes total sense. Okay, so moving on to, John, you wanted to talk about, you had brought something about um, El Colorado.
Well, it's not about El Colorado specifically. It's about the grant program, and I think that we need to revisit the particulars of the grant, of the grant program. Um, I'm in favor of changing the cap or eliminating it. For instance, we have precedent of um, a grant of almost twice, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars in the past to Adams Mountain Cafe. Um, there's I think there's need in the in the U R A for um, simply to do grants, and I'll I'll pick on El Colorado for a minute. Um, I'm happy to see all the work that's being done. One of the things I would like to also see is redo the landscaping. The streetscape is when you cut the weeds down, they look okay, but it's not good landscaping and the grant uh, to relandscape would be appropriate. Um, I think we need to be sure to include language in our grant program that we're not uh, providing a grant for city-required um, infrastructure or landscaping or what have you. So this is enhancement grants. And that's exactly what happened with the um, I'm gonna pick on you too, Farley. I happened to be at the meeting when the uh, Adams Mountain Cafe facade grant was discussed and approved. Uh, there was a banker on the board at that point in time, Ed Sauer. He reviewed the financials. I think we have people who are capable of reviewing the financials, and he said couldn't have done this without the grant. And that's the kind of grant that we want to give. When somebody is, and I'll give you another example, what if Paragon provide um, suggests a housing project and rather than the facade that they presented to us with the um, market cost housing, it's it's dumbed down and perhaps not acceptable, but we could give them a grant to upgrade that, which would be appropriate for the corridor. Um, so I think this is worth a discussion, and I'd suggest that um, we circulate the current um, grant language and review it and discuss it at a future meeting.
Anne.
Yeah, the only comment I'd have is we need to be real clear that we have two programs. We have redevelopment grants, which are completely different and do depend on the argument that but for this infusion of money, the project wouldn't happen. That was never the intent of the facade improvement program. That was to be a pretty streamlined, simple way to support small projects. So I, we don't want to mix the two at all. But relooking at the way that we've written the facade improvement grant program, I think is appropriate. They probably should do that.
Would it be beneficial to revisit both grants and look at them or no? Okay.
Again, we're never gonna have the funds to do what we did previously with redevelopment pledging TIF revenue. That's just never gonna happen. So, no. It would not. We just need to focus on facade.
And also, the redevelopment grant is very specific to state statute. I mean, meaning that we have to meet certain criteria in order to be able to complete a a redevelopment grant, whereas the facade improvement grant is our grant written through our language and what this board wanted. Do you, you know what I mean? So I don't think talking about the other grant
Yeah, again.
doesn't serve anything because we can't really change it. But the facade improvement grant, we can definitely modify.
And clarify.
And clarify.
The clarifying is probably the more important piece.
Redevelopment grants, again, David always drafted, it's not canned language under state statute. But it it is pledging TIF revenue, so it has parameters. It has boundaries. But we are not in a position where that's likely to ever occur again.
Right.
So we should focus on what we can do, and what we can do are some level of facade improvement or something along those lines.
So do we want, just does anybody, do we want somebody to work with Elektra and bring back to the board some changes to the facade improvement or clarification? Would anybody like to, yes, Pat?
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and didn't mean to interrupt you. Are there two separate sets of criteria that you're talking about here? Okay, so then we only want to mess with one set, okay? And is that on the website? Is it in a box someplace?
It's not, it's it's relatively clear. I mean, I don't know, it's pretty basic, but but also it doesn't say anything about calendar year in in that language. I think that the one piece to improve would be like some of that piece. And and maybe there is something that I just want to make sure that it's got all the details for it, that it is the facade, you know, or landscaping. You know, uh, another piece that it could improve is like the landscaping of that totally abandoned little triangle in front of Loaf and Jug that sits next to, like, that could be another piece. That could be a facade improvement grant. But going along the facade, it's what you see in the pedestrian and the, uh, you know, the the walkways. So it could be for murals. It could be for, it's not, it's not like exactly what John said, it's not like your plumbing or your, you know, hard things. It's it's like you're adding more plantings, adding enhancements.
Absolutely.
It's not bridging the gap.
So I think as John suggested, a a good first step would be for us all to read what we've got right now.
Yeah.
And then come back at some point or have a committee or a subcommittee or whatever you want to do to work on what might be appropriate changes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's definitely that a another area that we need to just look at what the goals are supposed to be. My understanding was it's to enhance the revenue of the district, you know, that's, you know, we're I mean, that's what you've said in the past, Anne, that, you know, we have a mission. And um, I question whether general maintenance, like replacing someone's roof is necessarily facade improvement. And and we've done that in the past, and I think it it fit the criteria the way we wrote the when we rewrote the facade improvement grant. And maybe we should dial, you know, tighten that up a little bit and have, you know, some criteria rather than, oh, you know, I just need some money to do what I should have done on my own anyway to keep my business going. So.
We should do what what John suggested. We should all look at the language and then come back with suggestions.
Yep. And also clarify. I mean, it would be easier for an applicant, too. Yeah, absolutely. I'll send that out. Absolutely.
Okay, you all have homework. You all have homework. Okay. All right, very good. Uh, city coun- council liaison report?
Thanks. It's been a couple of months, so. But big stuff, but not a lot of stuff. Um, we did uh, decide not to go with a speed camera. You'll remember several months ago, council had been looking at getting a speed camera to um, uh, write tickets and so on and uh, like they have in Colorado Springs, but we decided not to do that. The technology is still up in the air and the the cost to procure and run it is too much at this point in time. So more to follow on that. Someone mentioned that we're putting the new roof on the pool and the recreation center, so that'll, that's a huge project, but absolutely necessary. Um, and Alan might want to speak to this, but we did a uh, emergency A D U um, ordinance uh, a couple of weeks ago because the state had mandated that A D Us be allowed in all cities in the state. And uh, I think the major thing what in ours, it's different from what the state says is ours can be, ours must be between five hundred and seven hundred and fifty feet, uh, square feet large, so control the size. Not a lot, not much, and can't have short-term rentals, can't use them as short-term rentals. Those are probably two biggest things. Um, we amended the mid-year, we did the mid-year budget amendment, and we reduced our twenty twenty-five budget by about um, six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars so far, so that's a pretty substantial uh, reduction, and we'll see what happens. Um, we voted on parking, changing the parking rate in Zone Three, which is U R A, to five dollars per day along the uh, avenue and in the Dylan parking lot, so. Uh, and those are, oh, and of course, the big, the big thing is the bud- the budget for next year and the possible, or the likely um, uh, thing to go to the voters to change the amusement tax or the excise tax. So we'll see how, we'll be discussing that tonight. So more to follow on that. So since we're we're facing a rather large budget deficit, we anticipate a very large budget deficit in the next couple of years. So unless there are any questions, that's all I've got.
Oh, I've got one question for city council. Um, is there a way to get uh, updated signage on Becker's Lane? Because I noticed that all the signage throughout the city was updated except that, and so.
You stole my question, sorry.
Yeah, I don't, has all.
You can just say Farley said that.
I know that they were at least starting with, and Alan, you may know this as well, but the historic district first, so, but I'll ask the question. I can't remember if it was the entire.
Every single cross street has a new sign, except for Mayfair, because that pole's coming down and they've got the sign made, but it'll go up later, and Becker's.
Okay, I I will ask the question and let you know.
Drove me crazy.
Yeah, I have the same thing. I go down there a lot and people are always wandering around and they're trying to figure out where the shuttle stop is because there's nothing that tells them to go around the other side or all the way around to the hotel. So, or I mean, Dylan now. Yeah.
Nancy, what's the litigation exposure on the cog? Because that might erase any savings that you just quoted. Not more.
I hate to give the standard answer, but I can't discuss the cog. The litigation at all. Sorry.
When does it go forward, timing-wise?
Um, it's in constant back and forth.
Okay.
We've been everyone keeps, our various lawyers keep submitting things.
Well, it's a matter of record how much. Well, it's a matter of record how much we owed them per the original agreement. That's public.
We owe them, the original agreement called for them to give us $557,000 from the tax or the tickets that they are collecting. And everything above and beyond that goes back to them, which has been substantial. It changes by year, but for the first five years, I think, or three or four years, it was 550 K. It'll go up as, it's very complicated structure, yeah. But for now, I think it's still $557,000, yeah. Does that?
Nancy, do you have anything else to report?
No, thank you.
That you can talk about?
Okay. All right, very good, very good, thank you. Is there any other business anybody needs to bring up at this time? No? Okay, then I believe we can have a motion to adjourn. Anne motions second. Anybody, does anybody want to go? Thank you, Anne, we are adjourned.
Wait, who, who motioned? Who motioned? Except for spelling, I'm sorry of names. I apologize. Yes. No, I use a transcription, so I take, I record it and then I transcribe it. And then I use the transcription, that's what happens. It's called the Otter. Yes.
It's the Otter?
Otter.
Like, like an otter?
Like it, like an otter.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it gets things and it also sometimes attributes the wrong person. Nada, yeah, and then what I do is then I go through and I try to make, because I can listen to it.
All right, everybody, we're done, have a good day.
Usually, like I do so much transcription that it ends up being, like I've had, you know, I'm running these meetings and short-term rental meetings in Clark County, which have been awful. And I had 80 pages of transcriptions for a meeting, Otter, yeah.
Probably won't be able to. I'm going to just show you this, this concept, I don't know if this is anything.
Oh, please send it to me, yeah.
This is like where my niece lives, where the redevelopment, Stapleton.
Yeah.
And they basically, I mean, it's, it's just.
That's exactly what you do with the Calgary group.
Yeah.
And this is like, cool, this is a perspective of the building size and it's just like a sterile, just, it's all just houses.
So they're.
And there's no, nothing to do. And this thing is, I thought it was just going to bomb out. It only took them like about three months to build the place. And they've got like a, you know, pizza. It's called the Pearl Mark, I'll send, I'll just.
Yeah, just email it to me.
But it's like, it's become a help for this, this neighborhood. This neighborhood has dislodging and so people just mingle there.
That's exactly what we.
And it's like, it could be part of it. There's, see, there's a whole, this whole thing, there's a bunch of Earl, Earl Mars, our brand.
Yeah, that would be awesome to do something like that at La Fawn.
Thank you so much, Lex. Yes, obviously, absolutely, yeah. So once you get to 50, just, I mean, even if it's this week, whatever. The invoice is on the exterior and it can be all the painting, all the stucco, you know. Yes, you can do that too. So any kind of landscaping, any kind of updates, any kind of.